So.
Okay.
I will call the meeting to order. Uh, we don't have any alternates seat, so we won't worry about that one. Are there any additions or changes in the order of the agenda?
No additions or changes.
Okay. Um, any communications or correspondence?
We do have a couple of things noted on the agenda. They were included with the packet. Uh, there's a, a letter from the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies that discusses some proposed legislation. Um, one of which involved mandatory training for inland wetlands and watercourses commission members. Um, it, it, if passed, it would require commission members to complete the DEP's annual training. Um, for commission members, I believe, once every four years, uh, to remain in compliance. So it's, it's kind of consistent with uh, recently passed legislation that requires training for members of zoning board of appeals, planning and zoning commissions. Um, and things like that, just additional training for people serving on these kind of commissions. Um, and then the other was, I don't have it in front of me, but a letter from Cackeywick. Uh, regarding House Bill fifty-four seventy-five.
Isabel, uh, in that house bill, she voiced concern about wetlands not maybe having the authority to review or approve, um, new developments?
Yes.
Is that accurate? And, and I'm wondering your take on that. Um, uh, just to give you perspective, the stormwater culvert committee that Steve Everett has called on Beth Lunt. Uh, went on record to say, and I'm sure this will be in the minutes, that some of our issues with flooding in the town of Columbia in newer developments were because they didn't do the appropriate studies or analysis. And her issue wasn't wetlands, but it was in developing the design for appropriate mitigation of flooding. And I would think wetlands would weigh in on that. So I, I found that concerning if wetlands would be removed from that. And if so, what action should we be taking? So just wondering your take on that? Based on our meeting the other night and, um, should we take any action?
Yeah, certainly. So I, I think that, uh, the overview given by Cackeywick, uh, in that letter was, was pretty comprehensive. Like I said, I, I had it in front of me somewhere, but I have unfortunately too many tabs open. So I'm actually kind of scrolling through things and and looking for it. But they, they did express, um, a number of, of concerns and, uh, I think they linked to the bill itself so that everyone who's, uh, interested can, can read through it. And if you have concerns as well, you can reach out to your, your representative. Um, so they, they provided some information in there. Um, I, I think as far as Beth's concerns go, um, it, it is a wetlands concern potentially. So any new subdivision does have to be reviewed and commented on.
We've reviewed, uh, proposed subdivisions, uh, in the past. Yeah, it, it has to be taken into account. That water has to go somewhere and you have to make sure it goes in the right, goes the right way to get out of the subdivision. Yeah.
Correct. Correct.
No, it's definitely, it's definitely part of our job. It's gotta be.
Well, will this new regulation alter that in any way or did I misread it?
Let me just refresh my memory here. Um.
I'm looking it up also as we speak.
Yeah, the section three of, of the proposed language
That's it.
permits municipalities to adopt an ordinance allowing development in certain areas of their town with, without the review of the inland wetlands agency. So, um, is it likely to impact Columbia in particular? I'm, I can't say. I think that for the most part Columbia is, um, very supportive of, of protecting wetlands and watercourses in town in general, but also, um, in particular in the higher development areas. So the areas where those allowances would maybe be generally made in other towns to allow denser housing development and things like that. Um, and at the town center and for, for Columbia, that's the lake and the lake watershed. So I, I think that we're Columbia itself is kind of in, in going in another direction there in terms of protecting those natural resources. Um, while still allowing somewhat denser housing development in, in those areas, but, um, it could certainly impact other towns. Um, the state is all, so, you know, definitely, I think if it's, it's something you're interested in and, and I, yeah, all of the commission members, you, the reason you're on the commission is because you care about, uh, these, these resources. So I certainly encourage everyone to read the bill and, um, reach out and consider what was the, the communication.
Who proposed the bill?
Let me see. I don't have that here in front of me.
Let me see if I can get it on, uh. Do, 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 do. Uh.
I'm gonna put my glasses on here.
Yeah, C A W.
It's, this is, this is House Bill five-four-seven-five, huh?
Correct. Five-four-seven-five. Uh, it doesn't say exactly who proposed this.
It was introduced by Representative Nolan of the thirty-ninth district.
Okay.
Representative who?
Nolan.
Nolan.
Hmm.
I believe.
And where's, I wonder where that district is.
Yeah, that.
And what is he? Is he Republican or Democrat? Must be Democrat. Oh, no, he must. To get it. No, 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 no. I mean, he must be Democrat to get it this far.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? That actually.
If it's Republican, it would be gone by now. Cause they're, they're, well, today is, no, Wednesday is the last day of the session.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah.
I apologize. I think that might've been an older, an older proposal that I was looking at that came up. That was, uh, something different.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it. I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
I, I concur with you that I think the town of Columbia is incredibly progressive this way in terms of the protection of our watershed area, our wetlands area and the town as a whole. Uh, the stormwater committee, one of the thoughts is to join with I W W C. If there are new developments to be considered in Columbia, and they mentioned developments that are over on Hunter's Ridge and uh, Island Woods as examples of previous ones, um, that the Department of Public Works partner, uh, our head of public work spent ten years landscaping design for just this flood mitigation on new developments. And she's got her BA and her masters in this particular area. So she would be, Beth Lunt would be one resource to consider.
Uh, I, I wonder if this has anything to do with our governor because I understand our governor a hundred and eighty trees without even going to his, the inlands and wetlands.
Yes. Yes.
And Greenwich, was it Greenwich? I think it was Greenwich.
Yes, it was. Tree gate, tree gate we got now. That's despicable. Excuse me. I, I just astounded that that happened.
That's unbelievable.
Why is, why is a mailing address up in Maine, Sangerville, Maine? I mean.
Huh.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I don't think anybody will do a better job of protecting our wetlands than us. It seems like, you know, this is, I don't know, just, um, more regulation.
Yeah.
Crazy. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, out of state, I mean, as it is, I have trouble getting in touch with my representative. You know, I mean, good luck hearing from him.
You shouldn't have. That's that, Tim Ackert, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he's good. He's really good. He, he comes over to the senior center and talks to us quite a bit.
Does he really?
Yeah, he, he's been responsive to certain inquiries. Nothing lately, but usually he's responsive.
He, he's one of the legislators that really works hard.
I agree.
Yeah. And another one is, uh, Dubisky on a chaplain. He's always there.
Uh, the gentleman out of Mansfield I've worked with, uh.
Ted Ed?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Um. Very responsive. Good guy. So.
Okay. So, uh, I guess we got the communications and correspondence, uh, finished. Uh, no, we don't have an audience of citizens, so let's talk about new business. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the, uh, application of Jim Blair for I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash thirty-three?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And who seconded that?
I did. Tip Garrett.
Thank you, Tip.
All right. So, uh, let's get into that one. Uh, can you give us a little background on that? Isabel?
Certainly. So, um, this is right by the, right by the lake, as I'm sure you're all familiar and right next to Mary's property on the lake. Um, there has been ongoing drainage issues in the area, um, really starting up slope on the other side of the road, but, um, the, the area is really suffering recently from, uh, the, the amount of rain that we've been getting. And the, to my understanding, the water, uh, was being impounded right in front of this, this property in part, and there was some erosion uh, under the fence and also erosion by the stone wall itself. Um, and so Jim is, is proposing some work to remedy that. Um, you may have walked by it for, for those of you who, you know, kind of circulate the lake pretty frequently. He, uh, placed sandbags along the, the side of the fence as a temporary.
White sandbags, right? Yeah.
Yep. And so he's been, those have been there, uh, on a temporary basis just to, to keep water from entering the property that way. Uh, and so this is the kind of stab at a more permanent solution for that property in particular. Um, and so I think it would definitely be beneficial for us to, to hold a site walk so that everyone can see the area, uh, in person. Um, and I, I think that this is something where ultimately we may want to include or, or invite the, the drainage subcommittee. Um, this is, I think, ultimately going to be an area of, of somewhat high interest just related to the amount of water that, that does come through here.
Correct. The start, it's already on the stormwater committee's list.
Okay, good.
Okay, uh.
Hmm.
So, um, he's gonna actually, um, you know, I read, I read the, um, application. He's actually gonna build up a berm there?
I don't think it's a berm. I think it's just a bunch of stones or bricks that he's going to put in front of it to divert the water.
Correct. It's a curbing in essence.
Yeah. So where will the water go out to at that point?
So that property itself is, um, adjacent to the lake.
Yeah.
So the, the curbing, the intent of the curbing is to prevent water from eroding the, the existing landscaping on the, the property itself. Um, and it, the water would run along the edge of the property line and into the lake from there.
So would there be any piping put in or, um, I didn't see that in the application?
I don't believe he's proposing any piping at this time though. I think this is, uh, let me see.
Didn't see any on the sketches.
Correct. Yeah, I, I, I don't believe he's currently proposing any, any piping here.
There's nothing on the application. It's simply a diversion. Right. John, to echo what you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, just this, the, the goal of it is really to divert the water that's, uh, currently causing the erosion and to, to stabilize the area with something more resistant. So instead of the existing grass, um, it would be cobblestone.
So it would actually divert it to the west side of the property down by where that little beach area is?
Uh, I believe, yes, it would.
It would go to the right and left. Depends on where the water is coming from. Which is questionable, which is why I would love to have a stormwater culvert expert named Mike Curtis, who's a hydrologist with us to understand this, cause this is a bigger issue than one property. Um, and diversion to another property also could be an issue.
Right. So I guess we better set up a site walk. Um.
Oh.
Let me get my camera. Yeah. Uh, I can't make it on the next two Saturdays. I'm tied up. Uh, how about the twenty-fifth? Would everybody be available on the twenty-fifth? It's kind of late, but, uh.
Yeah, I don't expect to be here.
Oh, you're not here?
Yeah. I'll, I'll be there for a few weeks.
Uh, that's Memorial Day weekend.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, I can do like a Thursday. I can do Thursday night.
We do have sunlight pretty late now. I think it's past seven o'clock. So
Yeah, right.
potentially on a weekday, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
Hmm. How about a Monday?
Hmm.
Yeah, I can do Monday.
Potentially. I'm open.
Yeah.
Monday at five-thirty?
This Monday, the thirteenth?
Yeah. Uh, thirteen. Yeah, thirteenth at five-thirty?
Yeah, that works for me. I don't know about everybody else.
I can be there.
I could be there. Monday at five-thirty then.
All right.
I don't know if I can get Mike Curtis there, the hydrologist, but I'll see.
Okay, check it out.
All right. And I will, um, get in touch with Jim and make sure that that time works for him as well.
Perfect. That's a thirteen.
Yes.
I'm not sure I can make it, but I can be down another time.
If the thirteenth doesn't work for either a quorum or for Jim or, um, anyone else with the either that Thursday or the following Monday work, that would be the.
Uh, let's see. Following Monday works.
Or the twentieth?
Yeah, no, I, I won't be here. Well, yeah, I will probably won't be here up to eighteenth.
Okay.
Oh, so the sixteenth I can make work if needed.
That's Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
I can do that.
The sixteenth, I can do that, I think, Thursday. Yeah, can do it.
Maybe that's a better time. Well, why don't you check with Jim, Isabel?
Yep. I will do that. And then do you have the, the contact information for the commission members on the drainage subcommittee?
Uh, I, I can get them from Mark Walter.
Okay.
Uh, it's May sixteenth at five-thirty?
Yes. So I'll, I'll reach out to Jim and see if, um, both of those dates work and then, um, get back in touch with everyone. It seems like the Monday is the first choice and then Thursday's a good alternate?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, okay. And this is thirty-sixth Avenue Road, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
My problem is I got too many grandchildren who are athletes. They go to all their games. I try to go to as many games as I can.
That's a good thing.
That is a good thing.
Okay, uh, so the next item is item number seven, uh, old business. Um, we have I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-five jurisdictional ruling for application of Chris Ram for reconstruction of a pond at thirty-nine Zegga Road.
Hmm. So this, this is probably familiar to, to everyone here. Um, we did discuss this and I think the application was sent to you uh, back in the beginning of this year. It was included again in the meeting packet. Um, at the time, we discussed it as a potential jurisdictional ruling and the motion that was made uh, related to an administrative approval.
Right.
So I conferred with, with some other professionals, uh, and did some research and by statute, I can't issue an administrative approval for something that is in a wetland itself. So what really needs to be determined is whether or not this does need a permit. Um, I think it would be, and I, I have the, the uh, language from our regulations that I can share with everyone and, and read to everyone. Um, as to whether or not this would be considered a regulated activity. Um, if it is not, then Chris Ram can, can go ahead with, uh, the work as proposed and I would still review it and, and work with him to make sure it's being done correctly. Uh, and it, no regulated activities are occurring. But I, the work in the pond itself either is regulated by you as, as the commission members or it is not regulated as a, a matter of non-jurisdiction because it's related to farming use. So I have some language that I can read to you here. Let me just pull it up and share my screen from our, our regulations. And I, I do have a, a language for a proposed motion, um, as well. So these are regulations, uh, section four discusses uses which are permitted as of right and non-regulated uses. Um, the following operations and uses shall be permitted in wetlands and watercourses as of right, which includes grazing, farming, nurseries, gardening and harvesting of crops. Farm ponds of three acres or less or, uh, essential to the farming operation and activities conducted by or under the authority of D E P uh, for the purpose of, of wetlands or watercourse restoration or enhancement or mosquito control. Provisions of the subdivision, of this subdivision shall not be construed to include road construction or the erection of buildings not directly related to the farming operation. Relocation of watercourses with continual flow, filling or reclamation of wetlands or watercourses with continual flow. Clear cutting, uh, of timber except for the expansion of agricultural crop land or the mining of topsoil, peat, sand, gravel, or other similar material from wetlands or watercourses, uh, for the purpose of sale. So the activity as proposed, uh, I will show you, this is a, a photo of the pond that was included with your meeting packet. It's a little under a quarter of an acre, so it's, it's quite small. Uh, it was originally created for the farming operation itself. Uh, and so right now, uh, because the water itself is, is stagnant, it's been accumulating organic material and, and growing in and essentially, uh, disappearing. It's losing its capacity to hold water. So the, the scope of work as proposed is to first drain what is currently existing in the pond and then to remove the, the growth that has occurred over the years. Um, the pond, as I said, was originally created by the farm owner as a, a basin to collect residuals from the, the milking operation that occurred on the farm. Over the years, it's, it's begun to grow material inward, uh, and with the continuation, uh, eventually the pond will, will cease to exist. It'll no longer be a pond. So the, the proposal is to uh, drain the pond, dredge the material and install some kind of, uh, circulator to aerate the pond and, and prevent overgrowth. And the remaining dredged material will be used, uh, I think locally on the farm itself and the, the pond will be well-kept, uh, in consequence of the, the work as proposed. So.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Uh, does he intend to farm the property? In other words, does he have any animals like horses or cows or anything yet?
Uh, it was originally farmed. It, it was, the pond itself was created for, uh, the cow farm that was, uh, on site. I believe it is still farmed. I'm not sure if they still have cows on the premises. Um, but I know that they, they do still grow material on site.
A big difference if he's going to be farming it because he's probably going to require it for his cattle. I know I've got a pond on mine and my, uh, cattle drank from, from it all the time.
Yeah, and that, that was definitely the, the original creation of the pond. Um, and part of why they, they'd like to maintain it, uh, and keep it in good condition so that that remains a potentially feasible.
And, uh, do you know how much property he has with it?
Um, let me see.
What he's talking about there? Total, not, not particularly the pond, but the total area.
Total area of the, the property, the farm itself.
Uh, I forgot.
Thirteen point six acres.
Acres. Yeah.
Pretty small, but that's enough. Yep. Okay. Is this all former Zegga property?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah. Well, I, uh, if, if it's for farming, I would think that, uh, you could do it as a, um, a.
So I, I think the, the initial discussion, um, that we
Yeah.
it have was that it was likely, because it's for farming, uh, it is consistent with an activity that would not be regulated in that instance. Um, so I think the intent was to essentially say that there, there is not jurisdiction, but you'd like some kind of oversight. Um, and I, I've been working with, uh, Chris Ram on that and, and making sure that um, it looks like they're gonna potentially start, start work in August, um, when we're typically anticipated to get the least rain. Um.
And it, it is being used as a farm?
I, I believe it is still, yes.
What are they?
As far as I know.
Are they, are they raising crops or are they raising livestock?
I, I know that they do have some crops. I'm not sure if they're still currently raising livestock. Um, to be honest, they, I'm don't have my, um, notes for that particular application when we discussed it back in the beginning of the year. I don't have them right in front of me. I, I could reach out to Chris to, to confirm.
I just texted him. I'll see if he responds. I know him.
Okay. So we have a jurisdictional ruling. Why don't you?
Yeah, I, I do have language. Um, if you wanna wait for Chris's response, we could always move on and, and, um, circle back to it later in the meeting. I, I think that this is generally something that, um, where the commission's jurisdiction in, is and, and what you'd like oversight of, a broader discussion, um, that's worth having.
So, but what you're saying, setting aside any response on farming is this falls under the ability for him not to have, um, or to qualify.
Mm-hmm.
So he could move forward.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So do we need to know if he's farming or not?
Well, I think Isabel said that in the future, it could be farmed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's the historic use of the, the pond itself, and I think that's the intent behind maintaining it.
Yep. That wouldn't really make any difference then, if he's gonna.
Yeah.
Not.
Yeah, it, it sounds like a good use of the par. He's trying to resurrect something that was a, a good use in the past regardless of the farming.
Yes. So can we? Can we, can we vote on this motion?
Yeah.
Uh, accept the motion and vote on it?
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the juris, the, uh, jurisdictional ruling?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Where's my? Yeah, I'm at my, I'm up there somewhere. Okay.
Yeah, you're there.
Yeah.
Me see you, Tip.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. I, I know it's kind of a, it's splitting hairs sometimes with the language that's used, so.
Trying to do a good thing, I think, you know? Okay, anyway, uh, uh. Where are we? Oh, approval of the, uh, meeting minutes? Regular meetings of March fourth? I look, it looked very good to me.
Yep, I'll make a motion to, to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved? Um. Audience of citizens, we have none. Commission, open discussion. Anybody wanna?
Yeah, actu- actually I did wanna ask, uh, Isabel about eighty Lake Road.
Ah.
Uh, you're, um, you know, the, um, the, I forget the lady's name, but she had put a, a shed in there, uh, was encroaching on the wetlands. Uh, now there's a pile of wood chips there.
Yes.
Huge pile of dirt and. And I drove by there today and it looked like the wood chips had been dug into and I see, I saw like three wheelbarrows out there. And a truck parked outside of the road there.
Landscaper.
So I'm not sure if she's actually starting to fill it in, just moving ahead with her agenda, or what is going on there?
My understanding is that I did, I did speak to the property owner. Um, and I, I think that this is definitely worth updating everyone, uh, the commission on in general. So the, the shed itself. Um, the commission approved it in one location, which is actually slightly closer to the wetlands. And, and further down slope of where the installer actually did come and, and place the shed. Um, so the shed is, uh, further up slope and further away from the wetlands than what was originally approved. Um, which is. Potentially an issue from a zoning standpoint, but from a wetland standpoint, it's an improvement, to be honest. Um, so that, that is kind of at a standstill. Um, at the time of approval and, and really at the time of the site walk. Um, one of the things that was discussed to some degree was, uh, potential removal of trees or dead trees. Um, we've kind of. Touched on this topic, um, a, a couple of times previously, but, uh, when, when trees are dead. Typically I don't require an application, um, to have them removed. I do tell people that they, they can't remove stumps. Without additional approvals from, uh, either myself or from the Wetlands Commission. Um, but with the trees themselves, if they're dead, I, I. Generally view it as a, a potential safety hazard and, um, it consistent with the way that this, this commission has. Treated them in the past and the way that I know, uh, John Valenti treated them. Um, I allow trees that, that need to come down to come down. I don't. View that or treat that as a, a regulated activity unless there is significant number of trees. Um, or it's a, a clear cutting operation. That's, that's certainly different. So there were a number of trees that at the time, uh, were not in good condition. Um, we discussed allowing the resident to remove them and she did so. Um. The, the trees when they were taken down were then, uh, she had, uh, the log or round them. And the wood chips from the trees were placed in the wetlands. Um. So Mary and John, you both brought that to my attention. Thank you. And I stopped by the property to discuss that with the, the property owner. Um, I. Do consider that to be a regulated activity and wood chips for a number of reasons shouldn't be added to or left in wetlands. So I, I had a conversation with her about it. I asked her to remove them. And it, it did appear that she, she understood, um, she didn't, uh, know originally that that was. Would be considered a regulated activity or, or a concern. Um, so she was receptive to that and it did look like she started to rake them out, I think. Um, after my last discussion with her, uh, she was aware that they, they do need to be removed. Um, and was working on getting them out of the wetlands. The, the wood chip pile is still there. Um, it does look like it's been reduced a little bit, so I think that. Those are slowly being removed. Um, the pile is currently sitting kind of about where the shed was originally approved to go. And so. Hopefully we see, uh, further progress in the, in the future, uh, as the, the weeks, in the coming weeks.
Isabel, what is she going to do with all the fill? Is she allowed to fill in that wetlands?
Not in the wetlands, no.
Okay.
And she did, she understood that. Um, I think a, a lot of people view wood chips as. Well, it's, it's a natural material. The trees were in the wetlands. Why can't the wood chips be in the wetlands? Um, they do eventually break down and the, the, um. Release chemicals which are, uh. Not desirable to have in the wetlands or near the lake. Uh, and so I, I do generally ask people to keep wood chips away from both wetlands and the lake and, and she did understand that.
Yeah, so, um.
I was down there, I was down there today at four thirty and they were taking the wood chips, uh, out. That's what it appeared to me. I'm more concerned with the fact that the water levels don't seem to change much. Uh, deter-, uh, depending on, uh, storms. She's telling me the water level stays about the same. It doesn't. The storms don't seem to affect it. So I, and I've been concerned from day one where that water really does come from. Uh, it doesn't seem to be as active as the, uh, the stream on the other side. But, uh, she was taking the chips out and it didn't look like any, there was any attempt to fill in, uh, the wetlands that are there.
Yeah, well, that's good.
And I'll be, I'm going down there tomorrow. I'll check tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Tip.
What about the, um, the fill? Um, was she just gonna use that on her lawn?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Really? Okay, just, just to, um, support your concerns, Isabel. We've done a stormwater analysis of the eleven major inflats into the lake. And from a perspective of, uh, too much phosphorus and nitrogen. That is one of the highest in the lake, the particular drain. That comes off of her property and the property in front of her ru- right on the lakefront, which is two Erdoney Road. So there's a great concern of L Mac when people started to see that, that. Uh, i- is this where all the phosphorus and nitrogen is coming from? And we're at a point where our phosphorus load is such in the lake that we're probably going to see more algae, not good. And more native plant growth, not good.
Now, there were three or four, uh, three or four little, uh, uh, small streams or brooks that all come together. And that's, and at that, where are you doing the testing? Were they all come together for the phosphorus levels?
For the phosphorus levels, we, we've identified eleven inlet areas, some stormwater drains, some swales.
But I mean, that particular one, uh, that we're talking about, yeah, right there.
Yeah, Utley Pond, Utley, right where, right where the three. Pipes are on Erdoney Road and additionally, the drain that is right on. To Erdoney Road, which is, um, in front of her property.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Thank you, whoever did that.
Yeah, that's good. That's a great picture.
Is this, this is the drain for two Erdoney here, Mary?
Oh, let me look, um. Now, uh, I'm looking for the inlet. The drain is beyond and in the lake inlet. Beyond the three pipes on Erdoney Road. So yeah, uh, you've got Erdoney Road marked in black.
This is, this is five Erdoney here, so this is two and then eighty lake is.
Right behind her, right there.
Right there, that's eighty?
Right here, uh, the second, right there.
Eighty right there.
That's eighty and two Erdonies right in front of her. It's a series of rental cottages.
Oh, closer to the lake, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And there's two drains. Utley obviously has the three huge drains. And we have some significant phosphorus there, but there's a second drain. Uh, right off of two Erdoney where you can see those three households. There are three rental cottages and that drain has the highest amount of phosphorus and nitrogen draining into. Or, uh, Columbia Lake.
I wonder if it's coming from those three rentals.
It could be.
Yeah.
We have to do further investigation.
Yeah, it could be. I, it, that's where it sounds like it's probably coming from, yeah.
It may be.
Yeah, but it's all, it all has to be checked. I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
I know. Okay, I'll, I'll check out, see what I can find tomorrow.
Thanks, Tip.
Okay, um.
Hi.
Oh, are we fin- finish with this?
I'm sorry, I had one additional communication to update the entire wetlands. In March, we had spoken about the town beach drain pipe and the significant sand erosion. And, uh, Beth Lunt was seeking immediate approval to be able to place, um. Uh, kind of a piping system.
A dispersion device, I believe?
The dispersion device, thank you. Um, on March nineteenth, Tuesday. Uh, we presented, L Mac presented, uh, a motion to the Board of Selectmen that was unanimously approved. That instead of doing something immediately, that there would be a collaborative effort to pilot. Um, with the town administrator, with Beth Lunt, D P W, with L Mac Stormwater Subcommittee, with our wetlands agent. And any consultants needed, uh, to be able to research, identify and implement solutions to clean up. The stormwater drain pipe erosion and remove or replace the sand that is in the cove. So it's called the Pilot Project. We're not doing anything and, uh, we are meeting to seek the best solutions. We are including the hydrologists that we know, Mr. Curtis, uh, and nothing will be done. Until there's approval by the B O S and, uh, until the drawdown of October twenty twenty-four. So there you have the update. We, we didn't do anything immediately. We instead are gonna do a pilot project to see if this is the best solution, this dispersion, uh, approach. And it will be a collaborative effort.
That sounds like a good way to go, Mary. Yeah, I like that.
Thank you.
Very good.
More, more work for Isabel.
I'm happy to have it. Whatever keeps our lake clean.
Absolutely.
Administrative reports? Four of them here.
Yes, um, we pull those up. So, uh, let me see, I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash three zero. Uh, was a new septic system to be installed at twelve Webster Lane. Um, I'm sure a number of you are, are familiar with twelve Webster. We were there. Uh, in that area for, uh, some lake wall repairs.
Oh, yeah.
Fairly recently. Um, as with many of these, these lakefront lots, uh, there really, there's no other. Location, um, that the, the septic could potentially go, unfortunately, but, uh, it, it was done. Fairly quickly, um, with as minimal excavation and, um. Potential for impact as possible. Um, usually these things are, are. The septic systems installations are, are done fairly quickly and, and stabilized fairly quickly and. The area itself was nice and flat, um, so that was, uh. Not likely to impact the lake, uh, and certainly in comparison to a, a failing septic system. I think it was a, a significant improvement. Um. I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash thirty-one was, uh, an application for a new single-family home. And driveway at five oh nine Route eighty-seven East. This was a pre-existing, uh, building lot, uh, which is a, a rear lot. The house itself is not in the review area, but the driveway is fairly extensive and, uh, about three hundred feet. Or three hundred and fifty feet of the driveway do pass through the review area. Um. The driveway itself, I believe, is about fifty feet or more from the wetlands that, that were flagged. Um, and there isn't a significant slope. I think there's very little opportunity for real impact on those wetlands. Um, with that, that driveway location. Uh, I W W C twenty-three, twenty-four dash thirty-two was an application by Jim Blair. To build staircases into the bank, uh, of the driveway and an existing planting bed at twenty-nine. Uh, upper woodland terrace. There are two locations with really beautiful, um, outproppings of, of rock, uh, on that property. And.
Out.
Owners use them as, as kind of overlooks to the lake. They're actually in front of the house, both of them. And they have existing planting there, uh, and existing pathways. So the, the proposal was to. Add some stairs just to, to make it a little bit safer and easier to traverse. Um. The, the closest grouping of stairs was over a hundred feet from the lake, uh, and. On the upside of the house. So again, very little opportunity for erosion or any other impact to the lake. Um. Let's see.
At the Theophylus property? Did you say twenty-nine?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know it well.
Yeah, it's a.
Issue.
The rock outcropping there is beautiful.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Very unique, very unique spot in the lake, definitely.
Yes.
Uh, and then finally, at fifty-seven Erdoney Road, uh, an application by Andrew Dayan. To, uh, replace a septic system as well. This is, uh. Not, not right on the lake itself. There's some.
Across the street.
Yes, yep, there's wetlands in the back of the house, uh, and the, the septic system replacement is. Again, there, there really is not a lot of opportunity for alternative locations. Um. It's, needs to be replaced and it, it'll be in the backyard, I believe about forty. To forty-five feet from the wetlands, um, for the leaching fields themselves, which is, is the. Most significant portion of erosion. Um, it'll be well-protected and again, very unlikely to impact the wetlands. Well. And I think that is everything.
Very good, thank you. Um, so you'll let us know about the sidewalks, okay?
Yes, yep, either the thirteenth or the sixteenth. I will, um, I'll shoot Jim an email tonight and, um, get back to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
I have one last question. I have one last question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Tip, yes.
What's the status of the eagles? Ball eagles? Do we have, do we have any eaglets this year?
Yes, okay, can I, I can explain because it's right behind my daughter's home.
Oh, perfect.
Street, okay?
Behind, okay.
She's right across the street from me and I got the other daughter on my.
Wait.
Okay, the eagles. The eagles came back, however. They were, there were two, uh, there was a big owl and their nest.
Correct.
And the owl nest.
Took over their nest. So the eagles were scared away, however, they built another nest on Erdoney Road.
Correct.
And they are doing very well. My daughter said the owls had two baby, the owls had two babies.
Correct.
Are flying now. They, she took a picture of them.
They've already fledged.
Yes.
So we have no signs of little eagles. Mom and dad have not been in the nest, so we're not sure they've laid any eggs and it's getting late. But we'll keep an eye on it and hope for new little ones.
Good.
Every once in a while, one of them shows the, shows up in my backyard. At the top of the hill, they come up there to grab.
Yeah.
My neighbor's got a big compost pile.
Ah.
I haven't seen them like recently. Okay, thanks for the great update.
Yep.
Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Hasta la vista.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.